Blind and wear contacts. Yeah, yeah, but I got a big old style. It makes me feel tired. They make me feel tired. Stop with all that now. I mean, I already had side nerve pain and all that. Sties in my eye. I was gonna wear contacts, something like that. I feel the downward slope. I'm feeling it.
How we doing?
Fine, how are you?
Hey, if I could ask everyone to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Just a minute, I gotta sign my name real quick. Sorry, Joy. To be led this evening by Mr. Stephen Day, who is our new HR director. Stephen, why don't you come to the podium for us? So people can know who you are.
Maybe he wants to stay alive.
Our pledge of allegiance to the might of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, longation after God, in this world with liberty, peace, and justice.
Please remain standing and our invocation will be led by our police chief, Travis Thompson.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to get here tonight, conduct the business of the city. We pray for everyone in the room tonight, and especially the commissioners up here on the boards, that they'll hear everyone out, that everyone will hear them, and that we can peacefully assemble and just thank you for all that you do for us and the many blessings you give us.
Amen. You may be seated. We'll officially call the meeting to order. And first thing on our agenda is item two, departmental and agency reports. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Chenault is their second. Second by Commissioner Strode, I think you were out there, Commissioner Cox by a second. All in favor, I. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries. Item three, informational item. Usually I just say that's for information only, but we need to ask according to our attorney, three coups themselves. Commissioner Chenault and Commissioners Cox, just for about two seconds, and let us see if anybody has any comments. They'll be right back. You wanna say why you're accusing, so folks know you're not leaving?
Have it that forward.
And Joe's, the reason Joe stepping out is his wife owns property on Lincoln Street through an inheritance, and that's been clarified by our item 3A from the Department of Local Government, saying that he is no longer under a conflict of interest for his wife's property, but he is still under a conflict of interest for being on the urban renewal. So that's why they've had to recuse themselves. So do either of you two ladies have any comments, questions about the Lincoln Street?
Well, since we had them leave, I will say, Chief Thompson, thank you for your letter. I enjoyed reading it. And who's not here to be embarrassed, but I can tell you and she's rightly, are hanging out because I like that you're working on a five-year strategic plan. I think that's important, and I'm excited to see what else you bring.
Thank you, Commissioner Tool.
Thank you.
Okay, you wanna get them, we'll come back here. So again, all those items are just for information. I just wanna highlight one thing, which is item B. Week before last, I think it was, I spoke to a group of students ages third grade through 12th grade, and they were at a writing camp for girls only. It was very interesting, and afterwards I received a packet of letters from these girls saying thank you. I just have to share this one with you, it's on the show, okay? It says, Dear Mayor Reed, thank you for your time and gifts. They got like an ink pen and a sucker that you gave us. I appreciate it so much, and I'm glad that you talked about the drug dog, Genzy. Genzy is spelled G E N Y Z I. Because some bad people carrying drugs around here, and here a list, and here's a list of stuff I want in Winchester, okay? Ready? This is the other things and thoughts of a child. One, she wants an altar. Two, straight kids connect concert. I don't even know who straight kids are.
It's a Korean pop band.
She wants it in Winchester. She wants a Canes. She wants a Sephora. And she wants a lot of good food. So I just wanna share that with him, from the hearts of kids, come great words sometimes. Okay, let's move down to item four, work session. We put this on tonight to take up our entire work session time. If you will note at our last meeting, we decided to do this this evening, and the downtown folks were asked if they would, and I will read specifically, if you'd like to request that specific topic be included on the meeting agenda, please email City Clerk Joy Curtis in a later than noon on Thursday, August 14th. We encourage early submission to ensure your items are given appropriate attention. And everyone should have received that. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager to take it from here.
Yes, Mayor. We're gonna start out, first of all, with an update from Jesse on the project. So Jesse, would you come up?
Hello, sir. Right now, I'm Jesse McCoy, City Engineering Director. I was actually just walking around there before I come down. They, tomorrow, they're moving along pretty good. Tomorrow, they're gonna be pouring the strip down Main Street, colored stamp, so all that'll be going in. They're hoping to do that. They were patching this morning after Lexington Avenue in with some coal packs to get ready to move traffic over to the low side. And then, starting next week, they are going to get rid of the fences on there, put up some cones and barrels, so it starts to be a little more open for everybody. And then the papers will be going in late next week, early the week after. Handrails in the process, we should be putting that up probably by the end of next week, if not early the week after as well. And then mostly that side will be finished. And then just a few little touch-ups, and then once they move over to the low side, it should move along pretty good because it's just digging out the curves and pouring some spots back. They've had the landscapers start coming in and start putting dirt in and start getting that crap in ready. So other than that, everything's moving along. We're just trying to work to do some things and get a nice project in the end.
Are we still looking at substantial completion for November 1?
That, and then it'll be November, December 1st, CO final completion, so we're still good for the Christmas parade, doesn't matter.
Thank you, Jesse.
Appreciate that. So we did ask for topics to be submitted, and we've got one email with five topics on there, and I'm gonna address those right now, and I think see this power. So the topics were contractor oversight, accountability, infrastructure, the TIFs, code enforcement, downtown reopening plan, and long-term downtown collaboration, respect, and inclusion. So, not sure how many slides we would say, yeah, good. All right. So let's address issue number one, contractor oversight, accountability, and infrastructure. The question is Palmer Engineering and Allen Company have not consistently adhered to the scope or requirements outlined in the RFP, resulting in delays, lack of communication, and potential quality concerns. First of all, I think it's important to understand that this project is a Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, KYTC, project. They are the ultimate decision-makers on all aspects of the work. The Allen Company's been awarded the bid and has given us the authority to oversee the project on a day-to-day basis. Chris Frazier is the main contact for the Allen Company, serving as the project manager. Additionally, Palmer Engineering has been assigned an onsite inspector for the project, and the City of Winchester and Palmer provide advice and support as needed, but really don't direct the day-to-day work. That comes from the Allen Company. Also, I'm gonna give a shout out to Jesse. He's on the project every single day. I think we can all say that this has been doing a great job being on the project and overseeing things for the city. It's important to understand that public projects might not operate the same as private projects. Unlike private construction, where property owners and businesses can direct the contractors' daily work, in a public project, decisions must follow all the state rules and guidelines. The project is being carried out in phases, and at times those phases might overlap to maintain efficiency and to keep the project on schedule. While there is no detailed timeline for each phase, the project is defined by a start date and an end date, and to this point, there have been no delays. Communication's been a top priority throughout the process. To date, updates have been provided through 17 newsletters, individual visits, daily text updates, coverage in the Winchester Sun, multiple public hearings and meetings. This is above and beyond the amount of communication that is dedicated to a lot of other projects. So I think we're putting a lot of effort into communication for this project. I also wanna address the quality concerns. Now, these are taken pretty seriously, and if issues are identified during construction, then they are noted and tracked, and a full punch list process is conducted at the end of the project to ensure that all concerns are addressed. We encourage anyone to share any specific concerns with us so that they can be addressed appropriately. And I do know that we are addressing things to make sure that we get things fixed. And finally, questions have been raised about fines and damages. These are only applied if the contractor fails to complete the project on time, and at this point, the project is progressing on schedule. All right, next slide.
Um, Mayor, is this, is he gonna follow a typical work session format where we're work sessioning?
He's gonna address the questions that were received at the city from the, to the city clerk. That's all we got. He's gonna answer those questions and then let everybody else have a chance to speak. So just hang on, we're trying to address the questions we did receive.
All right. The next question comes from the TIF funds. Business owners have limited visibility into how downtown TIF funds are collected, managed, and spent. TIF revenue can be generated from property tax increments, sales tax increments, worker-related tax, and even corporate income tax if there's no consistent public reporting or clear process for requesting funding for projects that benefit downtown. So the TIF funds are generated from incremental revenues from the city real property and alarm tax and occupational tax. It is not sales tax nor corporate income tax. This is generated in the downtown development area, and it's for a period of 30 years. Project costs and redevelopment assistance can apply for the TIF funds. I wanna reiterate that the TIF funds are no extra tax on any property or business owner. These are the normal taxes that you would pay. It's just that we have it on a base of 2019 property tax and occupational tax, and then whatever the increase is from the base of 2019, those property taxes go into this special TIF fund. So there's no extra tax that anybody pays. The current TIF amount in the city's funds is $137,924.30. And this has been clearly stated that the funds will serve as the city's portion of the grant match for the Main Street Highside project.
Would you repeat that amount again?
Yes. These TIF funds will help reduce the amount that the city has to borrow for the 20% match for the grant project. Decisions regarding the use of these funds are made through a structured process outlined by state statute. The city manager makes a recommendation, and final approval is given by the city commission. At this time, there have been no funds expended from the TIF that they have collected in that account since we started in 2021. It's also important to note that the city is not currently soliciting any ideas on how to spend these funds. This is because the TIF allocation is designed for the grant match right now and tied directly to the Highside project. This is city revenue, and this is how we are applying it to build downtown up. Visibility has not been limited, and the city maintains transparency through monthly financial reporting and annual audits to the city commission. If anyone interested in reviewing detailed reports on the TIF funds, they may request them by filing an open records request, just like anything else that we have. This process ensures that the funds are managed responsibly, with oversight from both city staff, elected officials, and the Cabinet for Economic Development. All right. Number three. Downtown property owners have experienced inconsistent, inequitable, and sometimes fabricated code enforcement citations. Evidence suggests that certain property owners are targeted for minor issues while chronic blighted properties remain unaddressed, undermining both fairness and overall downtown experience. Without meaningful progress on severely neglected properties, Main Street risks further building losses and a decline in the business environment. The city takes its responsibility for code enforcement seriously, and the approach is fair and consistent. Nothing in this process is fabricated, and no individual business is specifically targeted. Currently, there are over 20 open code violations that are being addressed right now with the city in the downtown area. In addition, the abandoned and blighted property ordinance has recently been strengthened, and the related tax to that will be assessed this year. Whenever possible, issues are first handled through verbal communication in order to resolve concerns quickly and cooperatively. If that does not resolve the matter, the process escalates to a formal notice of violation. We recognize that code enforcement can feel subjective, and for that reason, we strive to apply the rules with fairness and consistency. Our approach is incremental, working with property owners and businesses step by step to achieve compliance rather than rushing to punitive damages. The city's goal is to maintain a safe, vibrant, and welcoming community while respecting the investment and efforts of our local businesses and property owners. And we encourage anyone to report a code violation if they see it, and we'll follow up on it. All right, number four. Downtown reopening plan. There's currently no clearly communicated plan for the official reopening of downtown following the Highside project. Without a coordinated approach, businesses risk missing the opportunity to capitalize on renewed public interest. Additionally, businesses are often asked to donate to city-led events rather than receiving financial support for their participation. First, I wanna say, when you say reopening, downtown is not closed. Downtown is still open. The project is going on, and downtown is not closed. It remains open for businesses, and we want to make sure that everyone is aware of this. We are planning a ribbon-cutting event, and we are currently in the brainstorming phase of that. There is no set date because the project is still ongoing, and we don't know exactly when that will be yet. Uh, to encourage collaboration, Whitney Leggett has reached out to the Downtown Business Association to be at their next meeting to share information and hear feedback directly from business owners on their participation and what they would like to see through the ribbon cutting. While community partners may sometimes be asked to participate in events and might even be asked for a donation, any request for donation is entirely voluntary and never required. We want downtown to thrive and grow. City has seven strategic areas to focus on. We're gonna support infrastructure, quality of life, parks and recreation, housing, downtown, safety, and workforce training. All right, number five. Business owners and employers, employees have repeatedly expressed frustration over being excluded from decisions that directly impact their operations. This lack of communication and inclusion has led to a perception that business concerns are minimized or ignored, and in some cases, owners are considering relocation. I wanna be clear that the city values its partnership with downtown businesses, and I want to emphasize that respect is mutual. Our approach is to ensure that no one is excluded from the process. I feel like everyone has a voice. Opportunities for input are available through public hearings, commission meetings, personal visits, emails, phone calls, texts, so that every voice can be heard. We also recognize that each business is unique, and there's no one-size-fits-all solution. Our goal is to work with the owners individually when possible to address different needs. The Highside project itself is being designed for the benefit of downtown. It has a goal of strengthening downtown as a whole and encouraging businesses to grow. There is a $5.5 million grant where $4.4 million comes from federal and state funds. And who would want to pass up that kind of money to beautify our downtown? In this project and others like it, the city is committed to creating a thriving environment where businesses can grow and succeed. Above all, our focus is on mutual respect and long-term support for downtown. We want more projects like this, and working together, that means all of us in the room, we can ensure that the heart of our community remains strong, vibrant, and welcome. Any questions from the mission?
I've got comments when we if that's first one is, you said about the Allen Company and Palmer's, do they have a representative here? I think that shows how much they're concerned about what we think. And 90% of the communication I've heard, well, I won't say 90%, I think that's a low number, has been after the fact. Folks have heard stuff after it happened. It's things like tearing up the sidewalks on the low side. How long ago was it? Seven and a half weeks ago? Uh, July 12th, over a month ago. But yet they still haven't been fixed. Why not fix them right, or why not tear them up right before you fix them? I won't say it's been disrespect to the people who have a business on Main Street. I'd say it's contempt. They don't care what other folks on Main Street think, and it has bled onto us. Well, I care about each and every one of you and your businesses, and I think everybody else does too. The problem is between here and your business, and all of that between us has failed you. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Tool, any comments right now?
I, not right now, no. I'd rather hear, I mean, for sake of brevity and timeliness, I'd rather hear them and then chime in.
We've got a good 35 minutes left, so let's see what folks have to say. Okay, this, Joy, we did not have to do a sign-in sheet.
We did not do a sign-in.
Okay, so who's gonna speak on behalf of downtown or an individual? Just raise your hands, I know who you are and
I'll go first. When we go back to the code enforcement slide.
State your name.
420 South Main Street. And code enforcement, we all agree, but there's lots of room for potential improvement. But my question is, who owns that property?
That's property owned by the city, and I have informed Public Works to clean that up today.
Okay, and I think that that's the code enforcement vehicle. Mark in that market.
It says planning.
I think that's about the summary of the code enforcement program. So we talk about fairness and all those names, but just take a look at that. It's the city, like what, hasn't?
It's up there by the building, the old unemployment office. Laura, just state your name, please, just.
Laura Freeman. I'm owner of One South Main, 31 East Broadway, and majority owner in Mount Holly Enterprises. I've got many things to say. The first is respect for the business owners, and I wanna talk about that. The TIF money, the increment financing, comes from our ability to have businesses and fixing these buildings up so that they become more valuable. That's the gap. And so, you know, you need to understand, give us credit for that. I'm spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, everybody else in here is too, on these buildings. And to have our sales fall by 50%, to have construction going on so that people couldn't move work, to have, well, you know, I've, let's see, I've been flooded out right now three times. One at Cartwright, one in January, one in April. Claims have been denied. And I, you know, I'm, it's pretty clear what I'm gonna want to have them to do, and it's on you, not on me. And so, respected inclusion is not just a word, it needs to be reality. Collaboration needs to be reality. The downtown reopening plan, a ribbon cutting, really? We need a real ad agency in here that knows what to do, or the businesses are gonna continue to fail. They've already failed, a bunch of them already have failed. And, and you're gonna have an empty Main Street. Is that what you want? But, so I think they need to think about that, and that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else? James?
So, my name's James Bowman. Allen High Street Collectibles in Two South Main Street. So, I kinda wanted to mainly talk about the infrastructure point. And I love everything that you said there. It's really good. But there was some cracks in it that I could see whenever it came to the communication side especially. So I have to correct myself, it wasn't July 12th, it was June 23rd. I had the text message that I got that day at 10:05, and it was just stating that they started the demo on the low side. And that was when I found out that they were busting up the front of our business. So
And it's been broken up since then?
Yes, but thankfully that wasn't gonna get it.
Yeah, but, but still, you know, yes, if I'm gonna put a fence post in, I'm not gonna dig the hole in June to put the fence post in in September. Yeah.
I know there might be a method
And it doesn't take an engineer to figure out that.
Right. Um, the other thing that I do wanna like put out there as a disclaimer is we all did not come here to attack anybody today. It's actually the complete opposite. We appreciate the fact that you gave us this opportunity and this chance to speak and get support from you all. The reason why we're asking for it is because the contract is with the city and the Allen Company and Palmer Engineering. You know, we have no say on the compliance of it and if they actually stick to it. There's a couple of key points that I did wanna bring up in the project plans itself that would be protecting us right now. One of those points, kinda going into Laura's situation, it actually stipulates Uh, one of those points, uh, kinda going into Laura's situation, um, it actually stipulates. Okay, sorry, he, uh, he had slides for me and stuff like that, so I was gonna be able to pull it up, um, and show you all, but it strictly stipulates that if the contractor hits any utilities, they are liable for the damages. So the fact that Laura had to wait four months, you know, to even get an answer and then get denied, that's, you know, unsaid, and per the contract, black and white legal agreement, they're liable for it. They're the one that hit the utilities, and even in the contract, it stipulates that they have to avoid them. So it was negligence on their part, and that claim should have been expedited. And, you know, me, as a project manager previously, we already had that set in place to where claims like that, because we knew they were gonna happen, it happens in any construction site. Uh, we had somebody like a point of contact that was already there to expedite claims. So two to four weeks, that's when the claims were submitted, filed, and they were also paid within four weeks. So, more or less like, what I was saying is like, we're just asking for support in enforcing what's in the contract. That's, uh, that's mainly what we're trying to get at. The other thing that I would like to bring up too, um, is that in the contract as well, it states that businesses have to have access to their front door. Now, I understand because of, you know, laying sidewalk and all kinds of stuff, I, I understand that there's going to be some instances where they can necessarily do that. Um, then it needs to be reworded in the contract, because at the end of the day, it's black and white. The contract in a courtroom, that's what they go by, because that's the official agreement between the two. Uh, I know this because I've been in multiple courtrooms for this specific matter myself. Um, and me being the project manager, I made sure that they like followed through on every single compliance that they put into the contract, so that way it protects people. So because it's in the contract, uh, by the way, the utilities thing, that's in two places in the contract, I'm just one. So, uh, and then another thing that I noticed in the contract, there was no compliance officer on either side, typically when, especially contracted this size. There's supposed to be a compliance officer to where somebody's boots on the ground, making sure and enforcing the contract is upheld, all parts of the contract. Another part of that contract is anytime the traffic changes, the city and KYTC is supposed to be notified within seven days. So if that's the case, then, you know, the city would be able to allow us seven-day notice of any specific traffic changes. Now, one could argue traffic meaning vehicular. Well, in this case, that's not the case, because the tap grant is specifically for pedestrian infrastructure. So, the traffic in this case is foot traffic. So more or less, I bring all this up just to show you and give you firepower basically to enforce the contract itself. If the contract wasn't forced, trust me, a lot of these problems wouldn't be as bad. Now, declining customers, that's gonna happen, we understand that. We do wish that there was a little bit more support set in place beforehand, because, you know, that's gonna happen. That should have been noted in the beginning. I know I haven't sent you all an email, uh, on September third, um, discussing, you know, potential failures of businesses and decline in sales and all kinds of stuff, uh, which I was hoping, we haven't heard anything about it yet, so if y'all had a plan set in place, uh, we don't know. Um, but that should have kinda gave you your warning of like, hey, you need to put something in place as a buffer or cushion to support these businesses throughout this process, so that way they don't fail. Now, sure, construction projects happen with the city, we understand that. And, uh, no, we don't want them to stop because it approves the city, we understand that as well. But in the same sense, even a small gesture of something would be nice. Uh, the two hundred and fifty dollars, that's kinda like a slap in the face and an insult, because it just kinda like makes us seem like that's the value that you see that we bring. Uh, I know you guys are not in charge of that grant though or anything like that, uh, you should help donate to it and stuff, I understand that. Um, but if that's the case, then there still needs to be some support from the city to help the businesses throughout this process with the lack of sales, instead of just being like, it is what it is, you know, like, whatever happens, happens. So, really what we came here asking for today is just support for the contract and enforcing the contract. Not necessarily fines or anything like that on the Allen Company, even though those should have been put in the contract to begin with. Uh, because they're not now, you know, that's a whole nother legal issue, the attorneys will have to go at it and, you know, deal with the contract in that sense. I do think that there should have been a fine set in place for the closing of businesses, because that would reduce the strain on the city significantly, especially putting in there that businesses have to have access to their front door for customer use. Uh, it specifically states that, so even if it was like a small fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars a day that a business had to close due to the construction, but it was a fine on their end, it's not coming out of the city's pocket now, it's coming from there. So, I think, like I was going back to you more or less, all we're asking for is support. So, I appreciate what you said, uh, Commissioner Cox, thank you. Um, and like I said, I appreciate you all put on this meeting for us, and, uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to actually speak and voice our concerns.
And thank you for your comments, James. Anyone else? Mason?
Mason, seventy South Main Street. I first have to say that, yes, everybody hates the Allen Company, and they're all mad over it, and just, I understand that. They've been really good in my eyes. I've, I've been sitting down there all this time watching. Yes, I had to be closed for three days for that concrete work to be done, and yes, there are issues that will have to be repaired out of that later. But it's not on these contracts, it's not on these guys out there working. And I, I've seen people be mean to them. And talking to them awful, they're just doing their job, and I think they've been doing a really good job of it. Something else we have to remember, I've been here ten years downtown on Main Street for ten years. We've never had foot traffic. We've never had people just rolling at any given time for any given reason. We've had to draw them in, we've had to do a, a beer cheese or a Pioneer Festival. We've never had foot traffic. And I'm hoping this will change that, that this will help us have foot traffic. But I think that we're I think we're progressing well with it. I don't know what your all's end of it is, and I know there's been damages and things, but I think those will be care, I think they'll be taken care of. But this has always been our slow season downtown, at least for my business. But it hasn't affected that for me too. We've actually done better this year than we have any year that we've been in business because of the construction. People want to come see what's going on and complain about trying to get into my store. That's what they came for, but they came, they shopped, and they left.
Did they back?
Yes, without any incident. But I just don't want us to give those guys as hard a time as I think they've been given, because it's work that has to be done. We've all built houses, we've all built farms and garages, and didn't get to move into it when we were supposed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mason. Anyone else? Mr. Flynn, would you like to address anything since this project started under your tenure? I know I'm probably putting you on the spot, but I did send you a text.
You probably not like what I'm gonna say, but I'm gonna say it anyway, um. I think when we started, um, this project, and I don't recall if I told you all or not, but I think I did. The intent, um, I knew it was gonna have dramatic impact on the downtown businesses. And I knew there was gonna be days that, uh, were gonna be struggles. And, uh, you know, when you get through the, to the middle of the project and, um, we're finally up over a, what I'll call the hump now, and you're going down the other side of this thing. Uh, you see that, uh, there's things that, uh, could have been done or should have been done, and, um, I know there's monies in that TIF, I know there's DDIF monies, uh, that are there. And I think, you know, during COVID, we, um, the city had dispersed funds to those businesses that were impacted, uh, during, and we tried to do something to help it. It wasn't much, I don't even recall how much we did. But I think that, uh, these business owners, and especially, and I don't know how you, I don't know how you do it, um, I haven't said and figured it out, and figured out the money, but those monies are for downtown, and those monies were raised because they've increased the value of their properties in downtown and their investments in downtown. And as such, this project impacts the entire downtown from one end to the other. I don't care if it's in that block or not, it impacts everywhere you go in downtown. I think that the City Commission ought to look at a way to take the funds that you've got and figure out something that's equitable for those that are in this block. They get something, a percentage, and it's definitely a higher percentage. And then those that are outside that block get something, because they've been impacted too. You can look at Lomas, you can look at the ones on the other side of Broadway there, they were impacted. Those monies, in my opinion, that's what they're for. They're for these folks that are here, those folks that, uh, have invested their, their hard-earned monies, their days. Mason's been here ten years, and, you know, I'm glad to hear him get up here and say, uh, about the contractor. Um, you know, Allen Company's done a good job, they've, they've struggled in areas, I'm not gonna say that they haven't. They've not notified Jesse every time that they should have notified this. Um, uh, Palmer's dropped the ball in a few areas as well, and, and I'll get up here and say that and, and say it without uh, any hesitation. But at the end of the day, um, we all have our faults, uh, we're humans and this, and, and we, uh, make mistakes. But we gotta own up to our mistakes, we gotta have our own shoulders and say that we made a mistake. But there's one thing that will help, and money helps, and seeing that the city cares about what's going on out there, I think will lessen some of the, uh, um, the scrutiny, i- if you will, and some of that. Now, the things that have happened with the flooding, um, and, and those types of things, you know, those are insurance, and that's where lawyers are gonna battle it out in court and, and, you know, make the best man win. But at the end of the day, I think there's things that the City Commission can do to help relieve some of the issues and deal with some of the things that, uh, they're talking about as far as their financial loss and bringing others in, because if they see that you care for them, you're gonna recruit other businesses to come down as well.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mike, so much.
Sure, Adam. Yes.
Um, in modest speaking, my name, we brought up again, it's all unaggressive. I send you guys a lot of stuff, um, and on this, when they're talking about collaboration, respect, inclusion, I did send an email in September, and I think I've talked to each of you probably independently, that we were gonna lose businesses during the project, and it was gonna be terrible. I do construction, I had a, a goodie, understanding what the project was gonna look like. But why did nobody, if we had time to prepare a speech, why did nobody sit down with me and say, what are you talking about? How can we help these businesses? What are you getting at there, Adam? Like, oh my God, they're gonna be impacted, what does that mean? Like, but it's eleven months later, and it takes Mike Flynn getting up here to say the same thing I did in September.
Yeah, Will, and like, if we talked earlier, say that you're gonna get one of these folks to have to go to their accountant and spend four hundred dollars to get a letter that says their business has been affected, spend four hundred dollars to get two hundred and fifty dollars back from the city.
It's just pays your electric bill. I mean, I, I see these people's electric bill, I rent spaces, I mean, that, that is an electric bill, that's not their insurance, that's not their overhead, that's enough. And that's what I would have talked to you guys about in September. And I, I hope that we are taking Mike serious, because it is a big construction project, and we are, we have a big ask here, and the ask is be, be supportive in a way that understands that every small business in America, probably most of them, they're two bad months from being bankrupt. I mean, that is being in small business, we battle that, we go through waves of it, and these folks are doing the same thing. And so, when we're looking at a six-month project, that's why I said back in September, we are gonna lose businesses, because most small businesses are two months away from going out of business. So we can extend that by saying their sales are down fifty percent, that gives them four months. Um, so what could we do, what could we have done? How do we allocate, we scrap the grant program altogether and take the whole thirty thousand dollars just to keep downtown alive? I mean, those were the things that I would have talked to you about. Um, but I, you know, I'm not as good as Mike about something, but he and I didn't talk about it. And so when we talk about collaboration, respect, inclusion, there's a lot of things that get attention, that we're not even brought in on, and it's the ones that affect us the most. Um, I, I would have helped you where there wasn't twenty frustrated people behind you. Just sit me down and less speeches, less be more battle plan. And that's really what everybody wants, they wanna feel cared about, they wanna feel appreciated. Offer to retain an attorney to look at the contract on James's behalf, but that'd be great gesture, like, is he right? I don't know, I've not read the contract. But that would be a really good gesture on the city's behalf, is, does this small business owner know more about your contract than you do? I don't even know that, but it, it would be a very good gesture on the business owner's behalf, has it been a real, I don't know, I have no idea. Um, but those are the things these people are asking, sort of small little things, we're asking for you to, you know, write a hundred thousand dollar check to fix the little building. We're asking for you to understand that there have been problems. Uh, we're asking you, and I have been, like Mason said, I've been treated wonderfully by the guys at Allen Company, they've been very respectful. Even the guys at Palmer, not giving them the business, Michael, tell you, I blessed them at them, the whole project. They've all treated us well, and I, I know that they're working as hard as they can. But you're the ones that, you're the boss, James isn't the boss, can't do anything, I can't do anything. All I can do is call Mike and say, what the hell are we doing? Um, and that's about all I got, but September is when I said what Mike just said now. And here, here we are, and could we have done more, and it would have saved you guys so much headache, so many less emails, I mean, less phone calls, so many less people, Greg, Rover, Shannon, we would have had so much less, so much less complaining and negativity if we would have had a proactive approach to the thing that we knew was coming. And we know that there's gonna be huge impact when we shut the road down, when we shut the sidewalks there, and it's just, they know. And do we need to do the project? Absolutely, sidewalks are bone part. But we also could have done some stuff to cushion the bullet, and I think we still can, I think we can make people feel like that their hard work, their ten.
I think they're appreciated.
That's it, and that's all that, I think, that's all everybody wants, right, we just wanna feel appreciated that we're all in, we're two months away from being in bankruptcy, we're, and that's what it is, to be a small business owner.
Will, and I mean, like, what happened at Laura's, what happened at Amanda's? I mean, I listen to Reds game, or I watch the Reds game from television, as often as I can. Listen to UK sports, and if you listen to UK sports on the radio ten times in a game, there's this simple commercial for before you dig. And obviously, somebody at the Allen Company needs to be made to listen to a Reds game, so they'll hear about before you dig, because it's the law. But if you're gonna dig down, you have to know where the utilities are. If you do it at your house, they're gonna find you five thousand dollars. If you hit a gas line, you're going to die. That's why it's there. Simple, basic stuff that was ignored. And everybody in this room knows I was against this mess from the beginning. And I hope we never do another one in this town, because I don't think this town can survive it.
I'll be dead, I hope.
But but you know, uh, we can't go back now.
So how do we survive what's coming now?
Right, we have to have a battle plan, not a game plan, this has to be a battle plan.
What Laura was talking about, about the importance of the grand reopening, I mean, like, we gotta make up for four months of fifty percent loss in sales, what can we do to bring five thousand people down here? I mean, that's what I want, I don't know, I, I don't truly, I don't know how to do it. And I feel like if we get, there, that these big, these people, humans, we have experience in all sorts of fields. Not everybody started as a electrical shop owner or a merchandise shop owner, everybody came from somewhere to get to where they're at. You put all these people's ideas together, jumble them up, surely we get five thousand people down here.
I mean, it has to be some kind of event, and folks, you know, it has to be more than once too. Because if you talk to the people in Morehead, their downtown businesses have still bounced back from what happened from the. From the wonderful project they did, uh, up there a few years ago. That two years ago, they had to go in and take out what they had done. And their businesses still haven't bounced back. It's gonna be a while.
And I just wanted to go circle back. That's why these points were put together. There was some, there was some thought, reason. It wasn't that, you know, we were trying to remind you that you have a civil sidewalk project on. No, I know that there's a sidewalk project. That was right. We all know the contractor, all know the Allen Company, all the steps. But it's all part of, the, the bigger picture is what happens on the other side of this? Do we have any businesses left? Uh, what can we do? Can we take some tip money to throw party? I don't know. These are all just wild, wild ideas that need to be evaluated. So that Mason's here another ten years, uh, so that Laura's still here, so that everybody, like. Well, we've still got a downtown because imagine what the public's gonna say. If you spend five million dollars in tax money and all businesses are boarded up, like, we need, that's the worst case scenario that could possibly happen. So what can we do to ensure that in December, there's people Christmas shopping down here? Um, and that, that's, that, that is at least directly group what I'm on. That's been, you know, consensus is. Um, it's not that, and I, as I am a person being on project, no project, but, but. Wh- what comes after? Mike said, we're already, we're doing this. Bruce said, we're already in the project. Shane just said, what, what's on the other side? What can we do? How do we save businesses? How do we take the ribbon cutting saying, I mean, turn it into something grand. This is the heart of downtown. Let's give the kids enough and play with it, like we do. Fireworks downtown for the first time. I have no idea. But inclusion, collaboration, respect, that, that's what we're talking about is, like. Let's do this thing together. Let's save the downtown. We've got a beautiful facade, and I, I wanna go shopping.
And Adam, I just wanna say that it's not like we didn't expect that there was gonna be hardship. And we worked very hard last year to think of ways to have businesses apply for some funds to recoup their losses. That's where we developed the DDIF grant, and it's three thousand dollars total. Um, so that was, um, above and beyond what we'd given that Mike referenced when we did the flooding and things like that. Um, because I knew that this project was gonna need more than just what we gave out the last time. We developed it to try to be, uh, fair and equitable. Is it enough? I knew that it wasn't gonna be enough, but what is a good amount? So in the budget, we divided it out, and that's where we came. Now, that's not to say that the project's not over. We're still taking requests, and I think, you know, the option is, is that we're gonna hear. And we need to really evaluate where everybody's at and make sure that we're, uh, treating everyone fairly. And, uh, if we give out any extra funds or any.
But if I understand correctly, I don't think anybody's applied for it yet. So obviously, we allocated too much money to that grant. We should have allocated zero, and we should have had a brainstorm to grant. You're asking people to do bookkeeping. Now, they may never even done their life or to do it, or even know what you're talking about.
Well, and we talked about it in the meetings, and we really hashed it out. And we had, um, a good discussion about what should go be, go back and forth, how it should be, um, set up.
And then this group would ask you, who was at those meetings? Respect, collaboration, and inclusion.
And I think we had downtown people give input on that meeting. We did.
I can guarantee that if I was at a meeting, and I may have been, where you told me that we were requiring a financial statement to receive, receive. Relief funding, I would have been the voice of, that's ridiculous. Uh, I, I would, I would have been that voice, and I would have assumed that every business owner in here would have said the same thing.
Because that's like taking out a bank. Yeah. And why would I put take out a bankroll for damage or something that caused my business to lose out? Why would I want you to have all my kind of.
But, but it's done.
You want these things when it should have.
Well, I'm here to say that we, it, it's not set in stone. We can change that if we need to.
That's right, and we should do that.
So, you know, I'm open to that idea, but I do wanna say that we developed that a year ago. Well, I would have to pull all the meeting notes and everything, but we, we talked about.
That group brought up so many times.
Mm-hmm.
That's your whole secret.
And it was brought up in, guys, it's long, y'all. And if there was an option to change it, it had a lot of bar, but if we talk about it then. Yes, they took Mr. Cox to get this meeting to even happen, and now all of a sudden, you're ready to work. And, and, and I, again, and I, I'm not trying to, but I, I'm just kind of shocked that that was.
Well, I just want everybody to know that we, we were working ahead of this. We were trying to anticipate what you would need and make sure the process was fair. So we had input, and that's where we ended up, so.
Last week, and you've been working all week, and now you're gonna get together with us and come up with these solutions. We asked for a meeting with you, Mr. Brady, for a while. That's a great.
Ask for a meeting with me to come to a downtown business meeting?
No, we, we orchestrate the downtown business meetings. That's for business owners and building owners.
Okay, where did you want me to come and speak?
At the commission, at the commission game.
Like this right here.
Been asking since April.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
Can I, uh, chime in my questions? Cause we're getting down to the wire possibly.
Sure, Commissioner Cox.
Well, mine's really quick. If Amanda's walking up, I can ask while she's walking. Well, I just wanna know, is there an exact number that's allocated for this grant? Uh, you said three thousand a business. Is there a overall number? It, i- is it the whole DDIF?
No, it's not the whole DDIF. So in collaboration with Clark County Community Foundation, they wanted to make sure that the established grants. Were a priority. And then any remaining funds, uh, would go down to the, um, DDIF grant for high side businesses. But also, we just didn't know, we estimated a rough number, but we don't know how many applicants we would have for that grant. If we ran out of money, I think we could look at making sure that we have enough money to provide something for all the. People that applied for. But we just don't know if that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, to your point, this is the downtown grant that's supposedly so important. Is subordinate to all the other grants. Am I correct? It's only if none of the other grants are applied for, and that's what you told us in this meeting. You said that same time. So it's whatever's left over. And it ends up being for a five day a week business, like ours was. Twelve dollars and fifty cents per day. As I joked from day one, you'd be better off to go sign up for jury duty because that's about the same amount. Plus, you have a greater count to come up with it now.
And I think we were gonna monitor it along the way and make sure that if there was enough, if there were more applicants than what we had, you know, we wouldn't.
Correct. But I brought this in last meeting too, what was stated was that we need monitoring along this point. You see, no doubt, be patient. That you guys have to give those processes any passing, even as I get saying, we've been trying for April, just to get this conversation.
And we know how many businesses are impacted because you know what's down there. So those are the businesses that you're gonna give it to. So it doesn't matter who, I mean, can anybody apply for that grant? Whether they suffer down here or not, because that's what I'm hearing. You know that there's an X amount of spaces rented or leased from the time the project began. And earlier till today, those businesses known should have been. But the check, if you all were concerned about that issue. They weren't supposed to apply for a loan or apply for a grant, give you our life's blood and all those things. Because you all know what's down, know what's in those affected areas. So that's not a question. You know what's there. I know what's there. I can walk down there and count them myself.
Amanda.
Okay.
Want to follow up? Um, first of all, thank you for actually giving us the opportunity to meet tonight when it was suggested two weeks ago. That was huge. So it is greatly appreciated because I feel like now we can like have a forum, maybe, maybe that's moving forward. I know there's a lot of things we can't change. You know, maybe going into it, we could have done better. It's all in the past. So my personal view is that what can we do moving forward? To actually work together instead of saying we're supporting and doing all that, but actually collaborating. I have fourteen years of corporate event planning experience. I'm happy to help, not oversee, but to help. If we wanna plan something huge, I think that would be incredible. Hire a professional person. If Whitney doesn't have, uh, if that's not her role or whatever, but use the money, hire a professional to come in. Contact the news stations, anything we can, cause I know, you know, it was specified, we're not closed. We kinda are though. I mean, I am open, but I get calls every day. Are you guys even open? Are you even open? And we're posting on social media, we're doing everything we can, but you know, if you drive by and you see guys jet camering in front of my door. Does not look like we're open. However, the guys have been great. They will tell you, I always ask, they need drinks or snacks. I am the place to come if you're out there. Um. But I do wanna see us work together. That's why I moved downtown. I don't mean to get emotional. I've tried really hard. Um. I moved downtown to thrive, and everyone around us is closing. There are more people, more businesses who've expressed that they may not make it until November. Do you all plan to protect us? Or is this gonna continue to the end of the project? And that is what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Anybody else?
Well, I would just like to add that there does need to be an event when this thing is over with.
There's going to be.
And the idea for the event needs to come out of this room, not, not from this table up here. You guys need, need to plan what you want.
Then I don't even own the store down here. I just wanted to have people support downtown. And quite a few people told us. And, uh, these friends today have the best day. Sorry, actually, I apologize.
All right, I was supposed to come up here first and kinda talk about the group, what the group did. The group is not an association. We have no bylaws, no LLC, no anything. It's a group of people that were all admin on the first pitch. The window license jar. So anything you got on this list was just the people that happened to be there to talk at that point, okay? I understand they're buried real points. Like they weren't made to make use of them. They're made because they're actually helping people build. Okay? Um, for everybody up here, political futures, employment futures. You can have grand open, cut ribbons with us. You do by yourself, you really got a ribbon and make a nice shirt. Okay? We wanna be here. We don't wanna fail. All we really want is people who wear our teachers. Leaders, whatever, to say, hey, it's still okay, guys. We still have your back. That's all anybody ever wants. And we've listened to you guys for years with respect. And feeling like it's gonna be okay, and I don't feel that across the board out there, but. So I don't feel like there's anybody in here that I haven't personally helped in some way. I know there's nobody I've ever wronged in here. And for my business and Winchester, I'm just wanting you guys to step up. We are more important than Allen. They'll make it. They'll follow another thing again, be right up next year or another thing. We can do it. Good?
Yes, sir. Thank you, John Paul.
That's it.
Anyone else? I'm getting ready to adjourn for our next meeting, so.
Are the commissioners speaking together now?
Yeah, we will. Let's let these, I've got two more. Are you all okay with?
Yeah, no.
Going over time?
Yeah, whatever. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Jada?
So I'm Jada Brady, and I'm coming up here in a different capacity. Um, I joined together with John Paul, and what he did not say was how this project has been impacting his own building. And some of the things that we wanted to bring to downtown business, or to downtown Winchester. One of them being some different events. We've had to cancel several events over this la- this project. Because of what has happened with the low side in regards to the sidewalks. Um, during Beer Cheese Festival, we did a big promotion for a, uh, murder mystery event. And we had to cancel because the sidewalks had been taken out, and there was no communication that, that I'm aware of. That I have been told in regards to that happening. And so that is concerning. Beyond that, we were moving things out of his basement the other day because of the water that is in the basement. Now, I know that that's been brought up to the Allen Company and to Palmer, and there really hasn't been any direction or, um. Any positive movements as to how that's going to get repaired and fixed. But as we know, it continues to rain here in Kentucky for whatever reason, and the water continues to, to drown his basement. Um, which is damaging, you know, different materials and things like that. That is a space to have events. And those, you know, as anybody who does events, those things are expensive to replace. And, um, so those are the things that aren't being said at this point. I do have some affiliation with that particular project. Like I said, we're trying to get some different events and things like that to downtown. I have a lot of love for downtown. I do think that the project on the whole will be beautiful once it's finished. But I have been a little bit disappointed about some of the communication challenges on a couple of different subjects in regards to this, um, board. And with downtown, or even with myself personally, um, with the PDA office.
Thank you, Jada. Was there someone else? Tim?
Given old banker who is not speaking for change, they say, hey, man, man, and. Plenty of people listen to a single word of everything. But I did talk to a former, couple of former clients. I was a banker this, this quarter here in town. Um, and one of their concerns was getting the tax returns and exposing them, let a lot of people see it. And it kinda struck me back when we did the PPP loans. Why don't we collect just the quarterly salary? One person collects, could be me. I'll lay it on company A, B, C, D, because we'll never have enough. And then I'll shred them and give them back. And we can see how people's sales were. Cause because I was a banker, I always want that. I mean, money is what's gonna build Texas. That's right. But man, so if we came up with what these sales have dropped over the last. It's gonna be hard because some businesses have worn around ten months before. But we'll, you can allow for that. We did it with three D people. See what people's sales have dropped. Come up with a number. We've not had that much fun. But at least we have a number and see proportionally who's been hit hardest. We can come up with something, maybe give us the foundations of that some money. And say, look, we have, and again, there may well not be enough. Because they hate, they can be seen, you know, good. Can we save? Oh, hey, I'll be back.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioner Pop.
We can't do that. I'm like, um, and I appreciate you saying that, sir, because that has been something. That I've been thinking a lot about, and in the group text that I am on, um, asked that question as to if we had more monies, how does that work? Does company A on the high side, is their loss the same as company B on the low side? The same as the company across from Leeds Theater, right? So there's a lot of different equations at hand, and I would love to see, um, a collaborative effort in that sense of how we figure out. What makes sense of if we can get money. Uh, I'm entertaining the idea of a motion and the power of the commission. To allocate percentages of, and we can't do it because the work session, yeah.
No.
Uh, to allocate a percentage of TIF funds, though.
Well, I'm definitely, I do so.
So we'll have to, I assume, revisit that in a not special called meeting, uh. But I'll say out loud, just so we're loud and clear, to the tune of fifty percent of the TIF funds, um, as a maximum amount. Again, if it's not met, it doesn't get paid out. Uh, but that fifty percent of that TIF amount is sixty eight thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars and fifteen cents. Round numbers, I was trying, but, uh, so just being, being a special called meeting, um, yeah, can't do much about that now. But, um, I think at the pleasure of the commission, we can.
And Mr. Dykman, with your approval, I'm gonna, um, ask the commission. Um, and charge the city commission, the city manager and the city treasurer. To look for ways to, for better lack of words, up the ante. And to revisit all the potential allocations that we can do, and let's see if we can't move forward in a positive way with this issue. So.
If, if I can really quick, Mrs. Martin, I don't know, CDBG grants, I was reading up on that a little bit. That might also be an option to help.
We have an open CDBG, and you're only allowed to have one open at.
There we go.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm for that idea. You said too.
Does that seem powerful if we do that, to challenge them to look and bring the ante up as much as we possibly can?
And in combination of that, plus beer cheese fund, plus what we already brought up prior, that puts you right to the one thousand dollar mark.
Beer cheese had allocated thirty thousand, I think, yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, let's don't.
Thirty thousand goes directly into the DDIF, but there's additional beer cheese funds that still be awarded towards that pair. Beer cheese funds that will help increase staff, I'm not certain.
Okay, I'm going to ask the city manager and the city treasurer to come back to our next meeting with some options. So without further ado, we're ten minutes late on our five-thirty meeting, but it's been good to hear everybody's opinions. I've taken lots of notes. Uh, appreciate everyone. Thank you for your cooperation. Thanks for bearing with downtown. It has not, I promise you, it's not been easy for the five of us sitting up here. Um, we've lost a lot of sleep and a lot of headaches, and and we feel your pain, and I swear we do, whether you think we do or not. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cox is their second.
Second.
Commissioner Chanel, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a white sign, motion carries. We'll take a five-minute break and be right back for five-thirty.
Oh, yeah.
If there's anybody that wants to speak at the meeting concerning items not on the agenda, please sign in up at the podium.
Nothing, no.
You don't have to sign in.
I'm calling the meeting to order here in six. At this time, I would like to ask our circuit court clerk, Mr. Tony Kirk, to come to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which contains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing, I'd like to ask our deputy city clerk, Diana Lane, to lead us in our invocation.
Where is she?
Where is Diana? Okay, Bruce, go ahead.
Yes, let's pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everyone here tonight. We just ask a special blessing upon them. We thank you for their participation in our local government. We just pray for our leaders, um, our board of commissioners. We just pray for our first responders' safety and well-being. Ask us to uh just decide everything in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. I think we have uh, three commissioners, AWOL, so we cannot conduct business yet. Okay. Officially call the meeting to order. First thing on our agenda this evening is uh, we have some special guests with us who are not unfamiliar to us, um, are part of us, and going to do some recognitions tonight. And our first presentation would be Senator Greg Elkins' presentation of the Kentucky League of Cities Friends of Cities Award, and I'm going to ask Mr. JD Cheney uh, to come forward at this time, and welcome to Winchester, by the way, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a couple of years, and I always love coming to Winchester, and I want to thank you all for letting me come through Winchester, because I promise you, you've been on I-75 coming from Lexington to Richmond, where I live. This is a lot quicker than that, so than than it is going straight to I-75, so. I do appreciate it, Mayor, and commissioners and distinguished staff, but it's always a good reason to to be able to come to a city to honor legislative uh, work of a legislator uh, from from a city. We all, we love doing that. Our board of directors selects a handful of legislators who step up and stand out uh, on legislative issues, especially for local governments and city governments in particular with the with the League of Cities. So it's not the easiest award uh, to achieve, and uh, we're here tonight to be able to do that, so we appreciate you providing the venue. I want to surprise you all by not holding this microphone as long as I usually do, because I do want the opportunity, uh, we have a new director of government affairs for the League of Cities, Ms. Gracie Kelly, who I I want to introduce to you all, who is uh, is now uh heading up our efforts in in Frankfurt and with the state legislature uh, and doing a fantastic uh, job on behalf of cities. Uh, so she's she's minimizing uh, my time in Frankfurt, which might be a good, a good thing. I know the senator will agree on that too. So I want to introduce you all, if you haven't had a chance to be, uh, Ms. Gracie Kelly, our director of government affairs, who will uh, talk about the night's award recipient, Senator Greg Elkins, who who, by the way, I just, I want to say this, has stood up even when it's not so cool anymore to to talk about home rule and local decisions being made at the local level. I can tell you, you can look, if you want to see a consistent ally and believer in the system that that local governments, the government closest to the people ought to be the one making the decisions. Can always count on Senator Elkins to give you to give you that answer. So if you would, please, uh, let me introduce Gracie Kelly, KLC's director of government affairs.
Thank you all. So I might get in trouble for saying this after we leave, but we have um, several legislators that we give legislative awards, but this one is the one that I'm most excited about. Um, Senator Elkins, he, there's not a better person you could have representing you all. Um, he is extremely loyal. He's a friend, and every single issue that comes up, every bill, you know, there's over a thousand bills filed. If he thinks it impacts local government in general, cities or counties, he texts me, he asks, you know, what's the impact for KLC, what's the impact on his cities, and that is a true gift. As JD said, the legislature as a whole, I would say, is starting to shift a little bit. You know, JD and I can't just walk into a meeting and say this violates home rule and then immediately be on our side. Um, it's not as simple as it used to be, and so I think you're all extremely lucky to have someone like him who represents people has the experience of, you know, working in local government and that truly just wants to be an advocate for our cities and counties. Um, a couple of bills in particular that I wanted to mention, House Bill 555, this was one of our uh, huge bills of session, so we had ten KLC initiatives that made it across the finish line. Like I said, there were over a thousand bills filed, and about a hundred and fifty of those were uh, bills that became law. So the fact that we had ten KLC bills get across the finish line, that's that's a big deal. Um, and one of those bills, like I said, was House Bill 555, Senator Elkins helped carry that throughout the Senate and garnered support. Um, what that bill does is allows a little bit of flexibility when it comes to municipal audits. In some of our smaller cities, as many of you, I'm sure, are aware, they have an issue of auditors that want to conduct city audits. And so this bill raises the population threshold of cities that are eligible to do their audit every other year. Um, JD wrote this bill. It was a great bill, had a lot of impact. It impacts over a hundred cities and given them just a little bit of flexibility. So that bill in particular is one that we're really grateful for Senator Elkins' support, and um, we're just happy to be here and present this award to him. And I will ask if you want to find if we can get a a picture, and we will issue a press release with Senator Elkins. Thank you.
Do you want us to come down there, Gracie, or do you want to?
Um.
Whatever protocol is.
Yeah.
Well, we usually come down there, but.
Okay.
Hey, guys, we'll give this, if if, okay, let Senator Elkins talk too.
We would love.
Hey, there, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Name a little bit on the camera, so look here for. Thank you. I tried to put my phone. Okay, now one for here.
You want to back up?
Sure. It would make more sense if you did.
But before Senator Elkins speaks, I want to tell him for each of us how much you mean to us individually, as a commission and as a city. And you have protected us well in Frankfurt. You've stood up for us. You are first at bat for us, and we appreciate it more than you'll ever know, and we just pray you're there for a long time.
Thanks for that. You know, when Gracie called me about this award, uh, she said, where do you want to do it at? Said, well, I'd like to do it in the city of Winchester. There's nowhere else I'd rather do it. So it was a no-brainer where to be at when it came time to do this. So I worked with Diana and Joel, and we worked out a schedule to make this happen on this night. I'd like to say this, so one thing that 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 I was proud and happy to take to Frankfurt with me was the idea that local government really is where the rubber hits the road. It's the boots on the ground. I I say this all the time. I can go to Kroger's, or I can go to Lowe's, and people will come up to me and they'll want to talk about a bill or a policy or something, and generally, it's a good conversation. Generally, it's a happy, friendly conversation. We shake hands, we smile, we walk, which is not always the case, but most of the time it is. But I know when I served in local government, I know what the mayor and the commissioners, magistrates, council members go through, and they go to Lowe's or to Kroger's. A lot of times, those conversations are more about a problem that someone had, because they know that it can come to you to solve those problems. It can't come to me to solve a problem, and I say all the time, what Winchester needs isn't necessarily what Paducah needs, or what Lexington needs, or what Louisville needs, or even Frenchburg. And it's it's uh, so we need to leave the control with you as much as we can, and I've I've always done that, and it isn't always about sponsoring bills. Sometimes it is about carrying them on the Senate floor. Sometimes, and Gracie and JD and I worked on some bills this year that we we took some bills that weren't very flattering for the city, that weren't very good, and we've made some corrections to them and made them more more knowledgeable. And we knew they were going to cross the finish line, so we tried to just make them better for the cities and counties, and and I I I really appreciate the fact that that they're willing to come to me and allow me to help them to do that, because it it means a lot to me to support our local government. So it it's what it's the philosophy that I took to Frankfurt with me. It's the philosophy that I'm going to keep while I'm there, and if I lose that, I hope that somebody will tell me it's time to come on, so that's it. I also want to say, I I am, you're very blessed to have a police chief, to have a fire chief that you have here. They they've both been doing outstanding jobs in this community. We're just a blessed community, and uh, I appreciate being a part of it. Thank you for allowing me to stand here in front of a microphone and talk, because everybody knows when I get a microphone. Thank you all, and thank you very.
Thank you, Senator, and congratulations on your move. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the East Hill Foundation check presentation to the Winchester Police Department for the purchase and training of a new therapy dog. And Marcy Miller, if you will come forward. Marcy Martin, sorry. Marcy, here's my glasses.
I'd like to do a little um background on this. Uh, so Walter Gabbard, as you all know, has a canine Gensic. Uh, he got, you know, whatever, I still pay, but still here. Uh, but during that time, uh, he had help from a uh, uh, correct, with the flyer. Um, paid a flyer, but after we were trying to crowdfundraise for a canine, as you all know, they're extremely expensive to purchase, train, and everything. Uh, through that flyer, uh, Marcy actually reached out to Walter Gabbard with this opportunity for the East Hill Foundation, which uh, they allow family members to give out uh, certain monetary values to a through a year of time period. Um, and through that, the East Hill Foundation, through Marcy, purchased guns, it complete, uh, paid for the entire training. We gave recognition of Gensic in time, but I want to make sure that we brought that up this this meeting as well. Um, so then fast forward, we all know that we all stayed in March, um, and it was kind of sudden. And me and Chief Thompson started looking at the process of how long it takes to to get a therapy dog, correct? And do go through the logistical process of it and the training and everything, and it can be an eight-month to a year process. So with that being said, we weren't ready for a dog now, but we knew it was a tool that we had to have in the future because of the impact it had on the community. Uh, so we started the process. We started looking at pricing. Uh, we found a place we really liked. Uh, kept calling myself, went up there to the facility, looked at it. It's extremely extremely professional facility, and they do top-notch work. Uh, it is a twenty-two thousand dollar price tag, though. Uh, through that, um, I started looking at ways to get money. Uh, Superintendent Howard immediately placed six thousand dollars, which we already received from the school board. They approved, and it is, I'll hand it to Alicia. And then on top of that, I asked Walter Gabbard if he would reach out to Marcy, because I've had the contacts shot in the dark. Uh, being a man of faith myself, I believe in power of prayer and and things happening for a reason, and Marcy's going to do the day we met on Friday, um, and she said that originally she had given the, given her, her allotment outward. And then it turns out, literally the day that I texted, somebody came back and said they didn't need ten thousand cent per dollar of the of her money. And so that being said, she, we went through the process, said bosses, men, group, for Walter Gabbard and Gensic, I filled out a grant application, which I give you all the time, totally all doing that. Um, we were awarded the grant. Um, the check is over here. I'll grab it. And with this, along with uh, Chief Thompson, I've been working with you all and uh, documenting on uh, the city's contribution, selling the delta city roughly forty-five hundred dollars to get a twenty thousand dollar certified therapy dog. Uh, so Marcy, do you want to, do you want to speak? I don't know. I will pitch up a spot.
No problem. No, actually, we're a a family foundation of uh, Western New York, so it, so I always feel so blessed that we're allowed to, because our family members are dispersed, so I always feel very blessed that we're allowed to give away allotments to things that interest us. You know, things that are able to help our community. So it's been a real honor. I've done, you know, several grants, you know, with Winchester, and of course, county grants. So it's just a fun thing for me to do, so very blessed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for caring about this community.
I don't know if, sorry, take a fish or what, so you had that.
And then I'm sure Alicia will take the check, so.
Yeah.
Chief, don't you want to go down, please? And Marcy Martin, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Clarification, the additional funds are not coming from the city. Kind of like general funds, I'll be, I'll speak for them. I will be paying for that at the local forfeiture fund.
You're right, sure.
So there will be no of city, of city impact.
Gotcha.
All right, item C, we have with us this evening, someone who has not been with us before, but we're thrilled that he's here tonight. And this is our circuit clerk, Tony Kirk, and he is going to address, we all know about the administrative office of the courts looking for a new state office building. And uh, Mr. Kirk's going to update us and let us kind of know what's going on in that process. So, Tony, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. I think the last time I was at this board was early two thousand, when you were promoting me to sergeant, so it was. So through the leadership of Senator Elkins, then we have obtained through AOC a sixty-eight million dollar for uh to be able to construct a new courthouse center. Um, we will conduct that first meeting on August twenty-nine at one o'clock. It will be in the fiscal courtroom across the street, and it is open to the public. Um, that will that will be at least a six-year project before the, um, they are saying if everything goes well, five and a half years, we might get a shovel on the ground at that point. Uh, usually, the first thing I get asked is where the heck are they going to build this thing at? And I'm sure that that's on everyone's mind. The when it all comes down to, it has to be, we have to, there's a lot of steps before we even get to that point. Um, I know me as a board member, I have no appetite for moving anywhere outside the the downtown area. Uh, AOC guidelines specifically say that you try to put that courthouse, and they put near the footprint of the original courthouse. So hopefully, it will continue to be downtown. Um, but there are six people on that board, the first one being Judge Executive Lishyates, myself.
But there are six people on that board, the first one being Judge Executive Lishy Yates, myself, Judge Cole Mayer, Judge Earl Rainey. We have a citizen board member, which is Ed Verner, and the bar picks one, and that is Judge Julia Adams. So those are the six important people. But we will be meeting on the 29th. I will hand out an agenda that you drop and tie in the round. That's the agenda for our 29th meeting. I will answer any questions if you have.
Mr. Kirk, will you repeat that amount? You say six to eight?
Six.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, okay.
The $68 million for approximately 60,000 square feet.
And, and so I'm happy to hear you say that your intent, as well as what it should be, is that it's within the footprint of the current one. Because, I mean, hopefully, I never need to know this firsthand, but I'm pretty sure you need to be able to transport inmates to court pretty easily.
That is correct, so.
Specifically by foot.
That would definitely be a, you know, you don't want to share the armor of the jail to have to transport prisoners all the way across town.
Sure. Sorry, I was happy to hear that. Thank you.
But we do need to clarify one thing possibly. I think there is a misunderstanding in the community that we're going to be tearing down the current courthouse. And if you would clarify that, please.
Right. That, that courthouse is a dual-purpose courthouse. That will go back to the ownership of the county at that point. And then, so that will become a county building along with, along with the annexes across the street where my office is at now. All that will become county offices at that point.
Will your office stay over there? Will it move?
It will move to the, that's part of the 60,000 square feet. My office goes over there as well.
Is, is there not a family court representative on that committee?
There is not a family court representative.
Is there a reason for that?
They, ALC in their, that's how they set that up. The longest-serving circuit judge is the one who is, who they appointed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kirk? Commissioners? Thank you for sitting through the first part of this. We appreciate it. You're welcome anytime. I know 4:30 was much more convenient for you today, but we're sorry that we had something else already on there. So thank you very, very much. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, items three, old business. Update on Kentucky Main Street program, I believe that's Dr. Maller.
Yes. So by request of Mr. Walfrid, for the logo to be removed, well, for the City of Winchester downtown to be removed from the Main Street logo. Followed up with a phone call with Craig Potts at the State Historic Preservation Office. And I asked him for guidance on what that process would look like, how that would work. And he conveyed to me that basically, that's been their logo for over a decade. It has been tweaked a little bit over that decade. And he considers that an inspired by downtown Winchester image and not a full, accurate representation of downtown Winchester. He also said that anyone can take a photo of downtown Winchester and claim copyright, since the city does not have copyright on that image. It's in the public domain, and they can use it, and they want to keep it. So I included a memo of that conversation. He said, if you can cite any legal authority that you have, I consulted with Mr. Dykman, and we don't feel like the city has any legal right to ask them to remove that. So I included that information in the commission packet for you, because I know we voted on that last time. But as of right now, there's no legal way that we can request to have our downtown removed from the Main Street logo.
So basically, he said no.
Correct.
Okay, any questions? Comments?
Chad might have.
Chad?
That's why he's standing.
Since there is no Main Street Winchester, and since that's hit a brick wall, then probably what we'll do, just because this is kind of a sticking point, is we'll draft a letter and send it to the rest of the Main Street programs across the state, essentially telling them, we got a program, we're glad to be out of program. It's a failing program, and many people are ditching it every day. And every time you all look at the logo, then it's a reminder of a city that wants absolutely nothing to do with it. So that'll be our, forgive me for saying it, but our pissy way of handling it. So yeah, that's what we'll do, and I appreciate your work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And city manager, thank you for following up on that. Appreciate the information. Item four, ordinances. These are for second reading, and these will require a voice by Madam Clerk, 4A.
This is a summary, a joint ordinance of the City of Winchester, Kentucky, and the County of Clark, Kentucky, amending Article 6.12 Downtown Business B2 of the Winchester-Clark County Zoning Ordinance, establishing text-regulating first-floor residential dwellings within the B2 zoning district.
Okay, is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Strode, is there a second?
Right.
Second by Commissioner Chanel. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Chanel?
Yes.
Commissioner Strode?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Tool?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Item 4B.
This is a summary, a joint ordinance of the City of Winchester, Kentucky, and the County of Clark, Kentucky, amending Article 8.6 Development Plans of the Winchester-Clark County Zoning Ordinance in adherence with Chapter 100.275 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes, KRS.
Okay, is there a motion?
No movement.
Motion by Commissioner Chanel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cox. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Chanel?
Yes.
Commissioner Strode?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Tool?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move down to item five, ordinance for first reading. Madam Clerk?
This is a summary, an ordinance creating and establishing for bid a non-exclusive electric franchise for the placement of facilities for the transmission, distribution, and sale of electrical energy within the public right-of-way of the City of Winchester for a tenure of duration, imposing a franchising fee of 3.5% franchisees gross annual revenues from the sale of electrical energy within the City of Winchester, and reserving the right to impose a franchise fee in an amount up to 5% of franchisees' gross receipts per year from the franchisee's sale of electricity to electric-consuming entities inside the City of Winchester's corporate limits, and further providing for compliance with relevant laws, regulations, and standards, indemnification, insurance, cancellation, or termination, and bid requirements, all effective on date of passage.
Okay, is there a motion? Sounds like we're not going to pass it. Is there a motion?
We have discussion. Is that okay?
Uh, well, you got. I'll make the motion. Motion by Commissioner Strode, is there a second?
We can discuss it anyway.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for the, for the, for the purpose of discussion, because I got.
Thank you. Okay.
So, yeah, it's questions, and I don't know if, I'm sorry to look over, city manager or Brian.
Who?
Well, do you want me to explain?
Yes, please.
So let me explain a little bit. So we originally agreed that the franchise fee would be 3% that we would ask. And currently, we, it can go up to 5%. So we were going to match it with our other franchise with, like, Columbia Gas at 3%. Mr. Dykman had a good idea. You know, we had residents that were needing their trees, the stumps grinded out. And Mr. Dykman said, you know, this would be a good opportunity to see if KU would agree to helping residents grind their stumps out from the trees that they trim. We went through that negotiation process, and that was unsuccessful. And response to that, we said, well, okay, we will take that language out if we up the percentage to 3.5%. And then we would use that half a percentage to help residents grind their stumps out that had trees trimmed from KU. So that's where the 3.5%, the city will retain that half percent of that franchise fee to help our local residents out with their trees.
Well, the problem with that is KU doesn't pay the 3.5%. We pay it. It's on our bill every month. So we're upping Alicia's electric bill to pay for something that KU ought to pay for. I don't care if KU wants to pay it or not. You know, I don't care if they want to grind the stumps out or not. I want them to grind out the stumps. And I vote, vote on this. They don't.
Mr. Dog?
The, you know, the response that we got from their corporate attorney is that they don't do that. And that, you know, it would set a precedent across their entire service area. And they, they don't do it. So, I mean, we can't sue them and make them do it.
They never grind the stumps out of the KU.
No, no. They said they don't do it, and, you know, they'll trim, they'll try and, you know, they had the soft language. We'll try and work with the, with the landowner, and we'll cut the, cut it, make sure that it's not, we remove anything that we cut, but we're not grinding stumps out. So I, you know, where do you go from there, Chad? I don't know.
You have the highest stump. Somebody that does that.
Well, that's what we thought, that the extra 1/2% would go to the tree board and let them use it for helping citizens and stump removal. And if there's anything left over, use it to plant trees. I mean, this'd be nice to have a lot of trees, or trees.
But if KU cuts out a, cuts down a tree in my yard, Bruce shouldn't have to pay extra so that the city can grind out the stump.
But if they don't, if they're not a stump grinder, they, they cut the tree down, but they're not a stump grinder.
Well, let's tell them that, sure, you don't do this, but we're setting the precedent in Winchester. We're not going to approve the franchise agreement until you do that.
If that's the will of the commission, that's what we'll tell them.
And then what happens?
They don't have a franchise.
And then we'd be losing revenue as they wouldn't sign it.
I don't know the, when does the old wound expire? In the fall?
Yeah, October. You know, KU is not willing to do this. I think this is a great compromise and a great way to help our citizens to get, get their stumps grounded, because it wasn't really any fault of their own that the tree had to be trimmed. So I think this is a great way to do that. Now, whether KU passes that on to their customer, that's up to them or not.
Oh, yeah. You look at your electric bill every month, it's got franchise fee on it.
Yeah, they, they pass it on.
There's a franchise fee on, fee on there, and there's a school tax on there that they collect, and then they remit back to us. But they don't pay that. They're just a pass-through. And I think it would be wrong to charge the people of this community to pay for something that KU causes and ought to fix.
Kind of a catch-22.
Yeah, I mean, right or wrong, we can't force them. I mean, we can't sue them to make them do it.
Well, let, let's call them tomorrow and say, we're, we're not going to approve your new franchise. And they say, why not?
What do I go for?
The thing about it is, didn't, didn't we talk about putting this in an ordinance?
We, we put it in, in the franchise.
But.
It, it, you know, they won't do it in an ordinance. They won't do it in a franchise.
No, but I mean, didn't, didn't we talk when the fella on College Street came over here about ordaining the fact that if you cut down a tree, if you are a third-party entity cutting down a tree in somebody's yard, you, you are responsible to clean it up?
Yeah, we did.
So if they're not involved, and we ordained that, right?
No.
Well, let's put that in an ordinance first and say, okay, we have voted on this. It is now September. Your, your franchise fee expires next month. Here is our ordinance. Are you going to follow it, or are we going to fine you $1,000 an instance?
We went through the ordinance, and we just didn't think it was very successful to be able to do that. Or did we have the legal right to force them to do that? So that's why we, this option would be better.
If KU is not, if it doesn't cut down the trees, they have, they have a contractor that does it.
Right.
And we said, we would, if they don't clean up their mess, we tell them they can't have a business license here.
Are you asking me a question?
But I, I mean, didn't we discuss that?
Yeah, we, we did discuss that. And, and we put it in the proposed franchise, and they said, no. So can we force the third-party contractors to, to pay for it? They're going to pass it off to KU.
Well, we tell the third-party contractors, you do it, or you don't have a business license here, and you cannot operate in this, and KU will not let them operate here if they don't have a business license.
What does that does to the homeowner?
It, it cleans up the homeowner's lot after they cut down a tree that he owns.
And who do we franchise with? And then the city goes dark?
It's not a franchise, right?
KU is not going.
We collect a million dollars.
Yeah. KU is not going to say, okay, we're not going to supply electricity to Winchester. That's too much money they get.
And we get how much revenue?
A million dollars.
A million.
So, so, so if they give us a million dollars, that means they are collecting over $30 million from the people of Winchester. I guarantee you, they're not going to pull the plug, guys.
Okay, we have a first.
I think what they said was, though, Shannon, that they weren't going to do it because it would start a precedent for them everywhere. And that's why they didn't, isn't that right, Bill?
That's what they said. And because the lawyer's letter I didn't bring.
I didn't bring it either.
I do think that's a gray area for the city as well, to start intervening with private property owner about a tree that was cut down. So if it wasn't KU, what if, what if someone else came through and then cut it down? And then where's, where's gray area? Where's the line drawn? We have to do this by October?
Yes. I usually hire Right Tree Services who did most of theirs. When it, W R I G F.
And it takes a year, so we've got to, and then it's got to go to bid. And then, so we had to put it on this agenda to meet the guidelines of the John Law.
Mr. Dykman, your advice?
I mean, we can try and do an ordinance, we could do an ordinance, but I don't know that that will solve the problem. You know, the thought that we had was that the extra half point would, would raise, what, about $100,000? Around a figure. And that would be, we don't have $100,000 worth of stumps to drive in the city that I don't want. That would help. We thought where the funds would be allocated and separated for would be the tree board and let them decide. Because it may not be to, 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 you know, to Hannah's point. It may be somebody's tree that blew down in a storm. And if we've got the money to help them to do that and clean that up in the city, then it's to everybody's benefit. I mean, it's, it's, we can write an ordinance, whether or not that bill will buy by it is another question.
Well, they don't have to, but the contractor.
I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying.
Well, if we up it, if we get a million dollars a year, and we up it 1/2%, which I am not going to vote to raise a tax on, on the fee, that's $167,000 a year. Yet, I'm, I'm sure that, that, you know, but I can't see charging a little old lady up on Hill Street another 1/2% on her, her, her electric bill to cut, cut down a tree, or, or, okay, grind a stump in my yard.
You know, a lot of our services are spread out amongst this population of our cities. Um, and we're all sharing the costs on that because we realize it's for the good of our services, our city, our safety and things like that. So, you know, it's ultimately up to you on how you want to proceed with this.
And this isn't joint, right? So this is not like
Why? What were you saying, Commissioner?
That it's not joint, that it's only within.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But why should the electric company have a higher franchise fee than the gas company or the golf company? You know, that's three percent. You know? Well, let's vote.
But so are we saying it goes from three to three and a half with the opportunity to take it to five?
Five is just in the statute. So they always put that, they always put that in.
One point something right now.
Yeah, it's one.
I think it's one point five.
It's three point five.
So more than double.
I mean, I'm just clarifying. This makes it roll under the same proportions.
So at best, at three percent, we'd still be doubling the tax.
Hey, maybe I'm just like not paying attention. I don't know, but, and I'm a home owner. And it seems like awful big hullabaloo over tree stumps. Just saying.
It costs more to grind out a stump than those to cut down a tree.
Interesting.
Just never really.
Okay, what's the pleasure? We have a motion and a second on the floor.
So we're going from a point and a half. Is that what we said?
It's three and a half.
One point five to three point.
So would it be like a moot point to go from one point five to two? I'm sorry, I'm just looking at.
But
We were trying to match at least the three of, other three, I like the three of. I went a half, um, I've got a product. I've been with later when they didn't like the uh, that was on plan. So then three and a half, I'm got brought it as a suggestion to then move that about half a percent into a different account. So that would just, um, retract those other funds and make sure that they're, I'm being, I'm using, I, I for that purpose.
So it's one and a half now and we're getting a million dollars a year?
I think it's more like one point nine. And when we went through our budgeting process, we agreed that the franchise was being renewed this year and that we based our revenues on the three percent. Then when the tree negotiation wasn't successful, um, we thought that if we dedicated some funds to help you, citizens grind out their stumps, that would be a good option.
How much more Alicia income does that bring into the city by going to three or three and a half?
Well, uh, thirty, uh, three and a half, the other percent would be put into a separate fund. It would not be utilized with the general fund. Um, we bring in almost two hundred thousand dollars a quarter right now. Um, it all fluctuates, it's depending on prices and stuff like that, um, billings to the young citizens. Um, and we have it one quarter of the year being the one and a uh, one and a half, I will wear diner, but whatever it is, it's on something that I'm close to that. And then three quarters of the three percent and we have that at a million dollars. I've, I've projected our revenue. So we, anything that we, that the commissioner makes a decision on will affect the bottom line of the revenue. Based on my question.
Any more questions, comments?
So you, you base the budget on the three?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm the one to withdraw my second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Strode, is there any second?
Are we going to write this out a little more detailed about the point five percent and maybe like into fiscal, if whatever's left there, we will spend the next fiscal on trees or?
No, we are specifically taking a per quarter once this new agreement takes.
Per quarter?
Uh, per quarter. They'll pay us, I guess, per quarter for the previous quarter.
Right.
Um, so then we would take a half a percent from that check to then give.
So how long are we going to sit on that money from grinding stumps or not and choose to put it towards like growing trees? I guess I'm interested to see.
Going to the tree.
Okay, I guess I'm interested to see how quickly we're going to turn these things. Like I, I don't want it to be five years and we're like, oh, who definitely needs some.
Then I would do a purchase order for the difference, um, for the tree because I have a separate account.
I want trees on the bypass.
Well, I'd say once the work gone out there, I'm just saying.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Tool. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Okay.
First reading only.
That's correct. All right, number six, orders general, A through C, Commissioner, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Commissioners Cox and Chanel.
Okay.
Almost there.
Oh, it's nuts. We're getting there.
This might be it for a while for you all.
Okay.
An order approving a contract of sale between the city of Winchester, Kentucky and Lucas Carter for property located at forty-four Seaboard Street for the purpose of the Lincoln Street C D B G redevelopment project phase two. And, uh, Lucas Carter is the, um, what is he? He is the power of attorney, I think, for all of these people that are heirs to this property.
Right, okay. Is there a motion?
Some is.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second? Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries, six B.
We need to bring them back, those guys.
No, just leave them out there.
Yeah. Went to get something to eat.
Thirty seconds.
Goodness gracious. You were AWOL. Did y'all read the notes? Okay. Item six B, Madam Clerk?
An order declaring a two thousand eight Chevy Silverado vehicle surplus and transfer to the Winchester Clark County Parks and Recreation.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries, item six C, we are withdrawing that from the packet tonight. I will explain to you why the Housing Authority is the only board that we have in this city and county that I'm aware of where you have to have an equal representation of Democrats and Republicans on the board. So the lady that was very interested in doing, and we were thinking about appointing tonight, is Jenny Davis. I woke up the other night in a panic and called Diana and said, is Ms. Davis a Democrat or Republican?
You can't say whether she is or not.
Well, I didn't say that.
Oh, yeah.
Um, if she's a Democrat or Republican. So basically she was not able to fill that seat. So we're back to square one. It's very hard at a four hundred properties in the Housing Authority to find someone that's willing to be the head of the residence. So, so that's why it was withdrawn. Okay, Madam Clerk, seven personnel orders, A through D.
An order reclassifying Travis Sturbo from full-time single-row E M T to full-time single-row paramedic.
All in favor, aye. Let me get a motion first.
I'll.
Motion by Shannon, second by Commissioner Tool.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries, seven B.
An order granting educational certification incentive salary increases to certain personnel.
Is there a motion?
Some is.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chanel, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries, seven C.
An order employing Nicholas Newman to fill the position of part-time single-row E M T.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cox, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries, seven D.
An order employing David Barnett to fill the position of crossing guard.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Chanel, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed by a like signs? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Tool. All right, number eight, uh, comments from the general public. Joey, did anyone sign up?
I do not believe anybody signed it.
No, I think it was mostly us.
Nobody.
Uh, does anyone have any items for closed session? I'm going to give us time to do comments in just a second, but does anyone going to have anything for closed session?
No matter.
But no, no? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and take Commissioners, City, uh, City Manager and County and City Attorney's uh, comments. Let's start backwards tonight. City Manager?
I do not have any comments tonight.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
I would like to, uh, take notice and congratulate the G R C boys golf team who had the, uh, they had the Cardinal Classic, had teams from all over the state and smoked one by ten shots.
Right. Congratulations. We need to bring them in, recognize them.
Yeah, really.
They've got a great team and a young team.
They have a really.
Yeah, a young team too.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you for your comment. Commissioner Tool?
Um, in the ordinance that we approved tonight about the electricity, um, franchise, I would like, I guess, I don't know if that takes away the first vote, but I would like to see within the ordinance mention of point five percent going to the tree board. So that it's not reallocated elsewhere when the money surrounds.
Mr. Dyckman?
I think this is just dealing with the franchise. I think internally, we can make, probably do it by ordinance or order that, that whatever, that, that half a percent go to the tree board because you know, our, our thought was that it, it, there won't be a hundred thousand dollars worth of trees grounded out. But giving that money to the tree board who really doesn't have any money, uh, could do a lot for the town, I think. Um, there's a lot of places that could use trees and trees are, are good for, for, uh, for recruiting and everything else. A tree city is, is a good thing. And it, it would allow us to do that.
If we're allowed to, I'd love to see it rolled in with beautification.
I think that's a good.
It's a good.
That's a good.
And so however that's drafted, whether it's an order or whatnot, I think we need to work on that. And then I wanted to just kind of reiterate what I said at the work session, um, in regards to the TIF funds. You know, I encourage, I know that they will work, our financial director, city manager, Whitney, whomever else, hopefully we can find some grants with Alicia. Um, but I'll just throw out there that I think the end game number is about a hundred thousand and whether it's pulling thirty from Beer Cheese and sixty-eight from TIF or fifty from Beer Cheese and fifty from TIF or whatever. I know I am only one person, but I think that is a beautiful round number. As we sit here talking about grinding stumps for the community, I think we could do a whole lot better by helping our downtown.
I agree.
That's it.
You're not going to hear your argument. I don't think of it.
No, so, but hopefully, I, I hope that we can make a move on the next meeting because, I mean, it is time is of the essence for some of these builders now. You know, first of the month, payments, all of that, so. And then, thank you, Ken.
All right.
Commissioner Cox, nothing?
I totally agree. I think the TIF money is a silicon Beer Cheese has already allocated money and I know there is more money there, Whitney, so we can, we can check on that. We had committed thirty thousand, I think it was fifteen a year for the next two years, was it not? But there is, there is other money there that we could do.
Well, the city treasurer and the city manager have been charged with coming back with options for, so what to do at the next meeting, so.
I would have started interrupting, Mayor, as we're kind of talking under you, Ms. Kitty, and I apologize. I'd be interested to see, like, we want to make sure that beautification of the projects can happen as well. So if that is within the scope of the project and that funding, or if that money has to come from a source like TIF, I think that needs to be completely determined too. Yeah, just knows we have money for.
Yeah, because there's.
We're going to need landscaping.
You know, you're going to need somebody to take care of it.
Yes, ma'am.
We need landscaping up front. We're going to have a bush out there.
Well, I told Jason that too.
That's all we have, much.
And another thing I would like to say, Pioneer Festival is, we're ten days out, you all. It's very early this year and I was very surprised they're having their Judicial Center meeting on Labor Day Friday of that weekend. I thought that's kind of a strange time. Anyway, um, and I want to thank upfront the police, the fire, Public Works, W M U and, and the city. It takes a village to put this festival on and a lot of hiccups this year because we have to work around the project. Um, we learned some things during Beer Cheese, so we will not put people behind the courthouse this year. We'll, we'll leave them all upfront and center, but, um, I think we're, if we have some good weather, it'd be nice if it cooled off a little bit, but, um, it is good for our community and we have a lot of nonprofits that are, um, setting up booths. And this year we had trouble getting nonprofit to do trash because so many of the civic groups had other commitments. So we have two Boy Scout groups and their parents, that's what it takes of doing trash. So, um, they'll make good little hunk of money for those two days. So I would encourage all of you all to support us. The downtown businesses are going to set up outside. We're finding a place for them in the block that's closed right now. And I would like to say a special thank you to Jesse who takes hits every day. And, um, I just, I thank him so much because I think you're doing a great job and you're trying to keep everybody apprised of what's going on. And you don't know sometimes, you, you yourself don't know what's going on, you know, until it happens. Well, and that's been tough, you know? I think that's been the biggest thing is the communication for everybody. And I think that's not your fault or our fault. That is the contractor's fault. You know, they were supposed to let us know and they weren't supposed to start everywhere at once and work down. So we've learned, I guess, from this project. It's going to be great when it's finished. I was glad to hear Mason speak up tonight, but Mason's on Facebook every night hawking his business. So that's why he gets people in there. So I think we can all work together too for the grand opening. Another chamber talked about putting in some money uh, for that. So I think we could have a downtown's help and, and, you know, anybody that's interested to be on that committee.
Okay, Mr. Chanel?
Uh, I think we need to help the business owners as much as we can, as soon as we can. And I think from here on out, the Allen Company and Palmon Engineers should be asked to attend these meetings. Whether that goes well or not, but I think they need to be here from here on out. Because I think they just kind of bailed out tonight. I think they catching a lot of heat and they don't want to step in the kitchen and the kitchen is right here. So I think from here on out, I think they need to be here and everything. Whether that happens, I don't know.
City manager can invite them, they remain.
They need to be invited. So and I'd like to thank the chief for setting up at the Washington Burns. I think they've been successful handing out tickets. I hope it keeps going. That's all I got.
Hey, the only thing I have is a reminder on next week, twenty-seventh, we'll be cutting a ribbon on Fulton Road at ten thirty A M. So invite everyone to come out and be part of the group. And then on August thirtieth at ten thirty, we'll be cutting ribbon on the splash pad. And that will open that weekend for kids and maybe some adults that decided to get in there and have fun. I think Bruce helped me on this or Joe, you're on the Parks Board. I believe they're going to keep it open, um, every weekend in September.
Yes, ma'am.
And any weekends that look like they're going to be hot, like Indian summer and that kind of stuff. Uh, they're going to try to keep it open, even maybe some October.
Yes, that is, that is, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, seeing no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Agreed.
Motion by Commissioner Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chanel, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Everybody have a great rest of your evening. We are adjourned.
Bruce and Brian, every time it rains, there's spending water over on Jackson Street where we took the bridge out. And it has become a, a uh-oh. It, it has some, oh, it becomes mosquito sick.
That's not good. That's not good, no way.